Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. We're going to get this session started. If you could all rise for the same other name.
Let me please testify that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious and kind heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you again for a wonderful day, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity that we have each and every morning to get up, go to work. We take it for granted, Lord. We realize that we're small in your eyes. Lord, we ask that you will be with this council tonight, that you'll give them the wisdom and the courage to make the decisions that are not only in the best interest of the community, Lord, but also in your Son's name, Jesus. We ask all of this, in your name we pray, amen.
The first part of our meeting is going to be to proclaim September as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Unfortunately, we see this way too often in our little community. Everybody knows each other and we all get touched with it, you know, one way or the other. These young kids, they, you know, they deserve a chance to not have to deal with this. We're there, we're there with you. Your community stands behind you and we will always be behind you. And, you know, it's my pleasure to proclaim September as childhood awareness. If you could come up, please, I want to, I want to give this, I want to read this to you. I know you've been touched.
Yes.
More than, more than most, come on up.
Yes. Okay. Well, yeah.
Whereas the health and safety of all people in Tassau County is essential to the happiness and well-being of the county's families and community. And whereas childhood cancer affects one out of every 15,000 of our country's young people each and every year, and one in five of those diagnosed does not survive. And whereas this tragic disease is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. And whereas when a child is diagnosed with cancer, it devastates their family and the unexpected cost of treatment can be further borne. And whereas the determination and bravery with which these children fight their battles against cancer should be recognized and commended by all. And whereas the TJ Rasmussen Foundation and other community organizations will hold events in honor, memory, and recognition of these children. And whereas it is vital that those affected by childhood cancer have access to quality, affordable care, and that research of all forms of childhood cancer continues to be vigorously supported. Now therefore, I, Mayor Michael Lefferts, do hereby recognize September 2019 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Tassau, Virginia, and I call this observance to attention of all of our citizens, adopted this 10th day of September 2019. Everybody use a good bulldog lamina? Yeah, just keep going. Terrify, please. A good tumbler.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Now, council member Davis would like to speak on behalf of, Kathy, correct me?
Yes. I was asked by Supervisor Holmes to present this to you all, so understanding you all couldn't be at the board supervisor meeting.
That was my fault.
Yeah.
I was confused about the schedule, so.
Done, okay.
He said he figured it out.
Yes. But he did ask me to present this resolution to you all. It stays September 5th, 2019. It's a resolution on the goal, gold for childhood cancer awareness. So upon motion Supervisor Holmes, seconded by Supervisor Asbury, and adopted by the vote of all members present and voting in favor thereof, and no one against the same, the Tassau County Board of Supervisors hereby support September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and further declare September 24th, 2019, as Gold Go Gold Day in Tassau County, Virginia, in support of childhood cancer awareness. The Tassau County Board of Supervisors encourage all residents to learn more about childhood cancer and become involved in efforts to raise awareness and support for research in the prevention and treatment of childhood cancer. And it's signed by Eric Jonathan County Administrator. And I don't have any for you.
Thank you all. We are having Gold Gold Day on the 24th, so everybody wear your gold or yellow that day. And we are having a fundraiser for three young men that are currently battling, they couldn't be with us tonight because they're currently battling. And it's at the YMCA on the 28th. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next on our special presentation request, we have a special Back of the Dragon request from Mr. Jay Shaw.
Good evening, honorable council members. You and I, Jay Shaw, and I here to represent the Back of the Dragon tonight. I first want to thank the town of Tassau and the council members for giving our proposal fair and considerable consideration for us expanding our business and the acquisition of the town's property, the current leverage. For our business expansion and for economic development here in town and the surrounding area. And also, another major plus to that would be to, through those dollars, to provide two new, brand-new Little League fields for the Little League. And I appreciate your all's support.
Thank you, Jay. So next we have the approval of the minutes from council meeting on August 13th, 2019, and the special called executive session on August 28th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 13th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session on August 28th, 2019.
Council, second, yeah. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next is the approval of financial statements and financial reports of August 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, next is our committee conference update. Councilmember Brooks is going to give us a planning commission committee update.
The planning commission met last evening and discussed, again, in great detail, the ban and breakfast proposal and rules to be added to the town requirements for that. And it's going to be presented to council. And the three changes were that the definitions in the record books are to be updated and the permits and fee schedule is to be updated. So the council will be informed of that shortly.
Okay, next, any unfinished business that we need to attend to? Okay, new business, the Little League field transferred to the IDA.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the town transfers the ownership of the Little League field to the IDA.
Second. Okay, second, any discussion? No, I'd like a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Catherine?
Aye.
Councilmember Colton?
Davis. Aye. Same thing.
Councilmember Fox? Councilmember Moll? So the ayes have it, the transfer of the Little League fields to the IDA. Now, next on new business is the Back of the Dragon real estate purchase agreement.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to support the IDA in the sale of the Little League property at the Back of the Dragon based upon the following real estate purchase agreement. And please bear with me and also realize some of these dates may not be firm. Whereas the IDA is the owner of certain real property and improvements located in the town of Tassau, here and after town, formerly utilized as a football field for Tassau High School, and currently utilized by the Tassau Little League baseball and softball, here and after collectively Tassau Little League, being more specifically identified and described herein below. Whereas purchaser has expressed an interest in acquiring the subject property and has preliminarily agreed to pay the sum of $300,000 for the subject property in order to further develop its Back of the Dragon Welcome Center complex. And whereas purchaser understands both the historical use and the current utility and need for continued access and uninterrupted use of the subject property by the town of Tassau to meet the recreational needs of the youth of the town, and further understands the need for like-kind or better replacement facilities for the continuation of the youth baseball and softball programs if the purchaser were to acquire the subject property and develop it as purchaser intends. And whereas purchaser understands and acknowledges that like-kind or better replacement facilities for the continuation of the youth baseball and softball programs will be an expensive undertaking for the IDA and for the town of Tassau, the costs for which will far exceed the base purchase price to be paid for the subject property by the purchaser. And whereas purchaser's intentions for the property propose the rehabilitation and transformation of an IDA non-tax generating asset into an improved taxable real estate parcel and potential taxable business entity for the town while concurrently working with the town to assure the provision of a comparable or better baseball and softball facilities for use by the town's youth. Therefore, and in consideration of the sum of $300,000, cash in hand paid by the purchaser to seller, plus other good and valuable consideration as described herein below, the receipt and sufficiency of all which are hereby acknowledged, the said purchaser and seller do hereby covenant and agree as follows. Real property. The IDA, the seller agrees to transfer to Back of the Dragon Properties I, LLC, to purchaser, the following real estate identified by Tax Map Parcels, parcel number 094-Broto-4-alpha-0008, being more particularly described as follows. That certain parcel of real estate with improvements therein and uncertainties therein to the long-term situation in the town of Tassau, located west of the Tassau County Courthouse, on the north side of Main Street and the south side of Jefferson Street, formerly Bencastle Turnpike, which lot or parcel of real estate is more particularly described by meets and bounds as follows. Beginning of the state on the south side of Bencastle Turnpike Road, the northwest corner of AZ Lot, tents with the said lips lot, south 24 degrees, 30 minutes east, 563 and six tenths feet to a stake, dense south 58 degrees, 30 minutes west, 509 feet to a stake in the line of Harrison Lot, dense with same with the John S. Bottommore Lot, north 26 degrees, 15 minutes west, 625 and five tenths feet to a stake on the south side of said road and corner to the John S. Bottommore Lot, dense with the south edge of the road. The following three courses is north 71 degrees, 0 minutes east, 240 feet to a stake, dense north 63 degrees, 30 minutes east, 80 feet to a stake, dense north 58 degrees, 30 minutes east to the beginning, containing 6 and 67 100 acres more or less. The property conveyed herein is the same property acquired by the town of Tassau and that certain deed from AZ Lips is validated May 1st, 1915, and found in record in the clerk's office for the Circuit Court of Tassau County, Virginia, in deed, Book 79, at page 148. This parcel is the same real estate formerly acquired by the seller from the town of Tassau by that certain deed dated September 11th, 2019, and found in record book of the Office of the Clerk for the Circuit Court of Tassau County. Purchase price. The purchase price of or for the property is $300,000, to be delivered to seller by the purchaser, with additional conditions precedent to purchase being as follows. Agreement of the purchaser to provide seller at or prior to closing with a complete copy of the final business plan for Back of the Dragon Properties I, LLC, for the planned commercial development and use of the subject property. Two, agreement of the purchaser that the entirety of the subject parcel, including but not limited to the two athletic fields, batting cages, press boxes, dugouts, buildings, parking areas, access roads currently located on the subject property, be available either for continued use by Tassau Little League through March 1st, 2021, or until two replacement or interim fields satisfactory for certification by Little League Baseball International are available for use by Tassau Little League, whichever is the sooner to occur. Number three, acknowledgement of the purchaser that the IDA must be able to acquire a sufficient parcel of continuous parcels of real property for the location of two replacement ball fields, which meet Little League Baseball International certifications for sanctioned play. See Attachment Exhibits A and B for certifications. With a replacement property or properties also meeting the following criteria. Fields are to be located on property within the corporate limits of the town. If it is determined by the IDA that no suitable properties exist for such development within the corporate limits, the IDA may consent to acquisition and relocation outside of the corporate limits of the town, but direct that such alternate location can be no more distant than seven mile radius from the subject property to be conveyed herein. B, fields must be equipped with comparable provision of utilities for concession, restroom facilities, press boxes, and to allow for patrons parking with the same extent or greater than that enjoyed by the Tassau Little League at its current location. And C, the town's ability to prepare and modify existing facilities at Lincolnshire Park for use by Tassau Little League for Little League Baseball International sanctioned play by no later than March 1st, 2020, such that the current fields at that location can be certified for interim use while the new Little League facilities are under construction, with the completion date for new Tassau Little League fields to occur no later than March 1st, 2021. Four, acknowledgement by the purchaser that closing is specifically subject to and conditioned upon the town of Tassau and or the IDA securing the necessary additional funding at or before closing to construct the replacement Little League field facilities, inclusive of all criteria required by Little League Baseball International for certification, including but not limited to installation of utility services, concessions, bathroom facilities, press boxes, batting cages, and parking at the new location. It is further expressly understood by purchaser that guaranteed funding component of the field's relocation project is critical to the occurrence of closing, and that such total funding requirement amount could reach or exceed $1.7 million over and above the subject purchase price. Condition of the property, personal property fixture. Property is transferred as is, where is, and seller makes no warranties whatsoever regarding the condition of the real property, the utility services or provision thereof to the property, or any fixtures located thereon. All fixtures currently located in or on the premises, including but not limited to existing lighting, fencing, public addresses systems, batting cage equipment, and netting, are subject to be removed by the IDA in its complete discretion. Real property taxes. All real property taxes for 2019 as of the date of closing are to be prorated by the parties heretofore. The deed and recordation of taxes. Seller will be responsible for deed preparation and for payment of grantor's tax and for the recordation of the general warranty deed conveying said property to purchaser, and purchaser agrees to be responsible for all other recordation fees, title examination fees, surveys, preparation costs, et cetera, associated with said closing. Closing date. Closing date of transaction between the purchaser and seller under the terms set forth herein is to occur on or before November 1st, 2019, unless an extension for closing is agreed to and driving by the seller. Insurance risk of loss. Seller shall continue to maintain adequate insurance on the premises up through the date of closing, and in all risk of loss shall remain with the seller until title to the property is transferred to purchaser upon recording of the aforementioned general warranty deed. Possession. Possession shall be delivered at the time of closing. No broker. Each party represents to the other that no brokers involved in this transaction and no brokerage fees are involved in this transaction. Mechanics and material men's liens. Notice of Virginia Law, Virginia Code 43-1, permits persons who have performed labor or furnished materials for the construction, removal, repair, or improvement of any building or structure to file a lien against the property. This lien may be filed anytime after the work is commenced or the material is furnished, but not later than earlier of, one, 90 days from the last day of the month in which the lien order or last performed work or furnished materials, or, two, 90 days from the time the construction, removal, repair, or improvement is terminated. An effective lien for work performed prior to settlement date may be filed after settlement. Legal counsel should be consulted. In this end, seller covenants and agrees to hold purchaser harmless for any mechanics or material men's liens which may be filed against the property subsequent to the settlement, i.e. the closing date, for work performed on the premises at seller's discretion or on seller's behalf. Attorney and property. Seller makes no representations or as it matters to affecting adjacent parcels, and purchaser should exercise whatever due diligence that purchaser deems necessary with respect to adjacent parcels. Title and insurance notification. Purchaser may wish at purchaser's expense to purchase owner's title insurance. Depending on the particular circumstances of the transaction, such insurance could include affirmative coverage against possible mechanics and material men's liens for labor and materials performed prior to settlement, in which, though not recorded at the time of recordation of purchaser's deed, could be subsequently recorded and would adversely affect purchaser's title to the property. The coverage afforded by such title insurance would be governed by the terms and conditions thereof, and the premium for obtaining such title insurance coverage will be determined by its coverage. Notice to purchaser. Purchaser should exercise whatever due diligence purchaser deems necessary with respect to information on any sexual offender registered under Chapter 23, 19.2 through 387, Title 19 of the Code of Virginia. Such information be obtained by contact in your local police department or Department of State Police Central Records Exchange at 804-674-2000. Notice to purchaser regarding settlement agent and settlement services. Choice of settlement agent. You have the right to select a settlement agent to handle the closing of this transaction. The settlement agent's role in closing your transaction involves the coordination of numerous administrative and clerical functions relating to the collection of documents and the collection of disbursement of funds required to carry out the terms of the contract between the parties. If part of the purchase price is financed, your lender will instruct the settlement agent as to the signing and reporting of loan documents and disbursement of loan proceeds. No settlement agent can provide legal advice to any party with the transaction except a settlement agent who is engaged in the private practice of law in Virginia and who has been retained or engaged by a party of the transaction for the purpose of providing legal services. Notice regarding escrow, closing, and settlement service guidelines. The Virginia State Bar issues guidelines to help settlement agents avoid and prevent unauthorized practice of law in connection with furnishing escrow, settlement, or closing services. As a party of a real estate transaction, you are entitled to receive a copy of these guidelines from your settlement agent on request in accordance with provisions of Consumer Real Estate Protection Act.
Can we get a second on the agreement?
One second.
So, any discussion?
Can I say something? I think we have to realize that this is a two-pronged problem or issue that we're facing here. Firstly, we have to realize we're in it with Back of the Dragon. It's our economic resurrection plan. If you look at it, the way the state and major authorities are looking at it in the state, it is essential for us to support it. That being said, this expansion was inevitable. Of course, there were going to be more space. But more importantly, you need, you know that the major concern in Tassau with everything that happens here has been the good of the children, whether it's education, or it's sports, or it's whatever, health issues. We're always most concerned with the children. And this is really, it may be initially an inconvenience, and we, none of us like change, and we don't want to go through all the mess. But the fact is, they're going to end up with a wonderful new facility. And that's what we have to keep in mind.
Well, what kind of resurrection? It provides new jobs, basically.
Well, but it will be long-term.
Long-term, and what?
Sir, we'll have a public comment in a little bit, and if you sign in, so you're ready.
Doesn't do much good, I think, in fact.
Nothing, nothing is taking place. We're just reading what could happen.
It's ready for a vote now. And, you know, while you're commenting, I didn't even know that this was going to go for a vote until well after any opportunity to say anything. There hasn't been any public dissemination of information that this was going on. There's been closed-door meetings. I realize I'm out of order, and I apologize for that, but there are people who live there that have concerns, and they haven't been heard, and I don't know that they can.
Would it be possible to go ahead and hear concerns now before we have the vote?
Well, it sounds like it's already as undue as.
I would say, I would like to say just that, a couple of things, that with the stipulations that are set forth, nothing happens until then. But with regard to one thing that you did say, there has not been closed-door meetings. We met with Little League, and we invited Little League to bring whomever they chose, and they brought people that are in this room. Nothing has been done with regard to this property in the executive session whatsoever.
I realize you have a vote on, but it's still discussed.
Not in closed doors. So based on what you just said, that was a misreputation about how we move forward with this?
Then that's my error. That's just information I have. As I say, I would correct.
And in full transparency, I'll tell you that the reason why it's come this quickly, and it literally on the 11th hour, getting this document, and thank you, Brad, for working on it, and everyone else that put a hand in it, was because the entrepreneur, or entrepreneurs in question, are wanting to move forward now. And in diligence, we decided to move forward, not hastily, but as quickly as we could, so that we didn't lose an opportunity that may not ever come again.
I can understand. May I ask a question? I mean.
I think based on sensitivity, and I don't know how the rest of this council thinks, but if you want to spend five or 10 minutes on this, you can call the time on it.
I won't take that long.
Well, you're, I don't think you're the only person in the room that likes a comment, so.
I'm just saying, I won't take a long time.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, if everyone else on council.
Oh, absolutely.
I suggest that we're not here and going over the same thing with several people, stating the same concern, that we put a time on it and we put a. the same concern, that we put a time on it, and we put a time on each person's comments.
Typically do the same, three methods we would do here in public.
About 15 minutes. Right. Can we do that with a motion on the floor?
What we can do, Mayor, if you stick to the actual council to retract the motion, and we can move these cancelled comments up, if you'd like, and come back to it.
I'll make a motion to retract...
I'll say that.
And then we can just move cancel, I mean, those comments up later, if you want to do it.
Sure.
Can we follow the behavior of this, so we can...
Just be the vote on that.
Aye.
Aye.
Call a vote. So, we're just going to move forward?
And I appreciate you, I appreciate you ignoring part of the procedure to let me just ask a point or two. My name's David Dolph Fisher. My wife and I live just below Back of the Dragon. I applaud you for looking after the kids. They deserve a place to play. They've been playing softball and baseball for as long as I can remember, and that's great. But you also have a duty to the people who live there. And even though there's commerce in the area, there's also residents in the area, including two church properties within a couple of hundred feet. And I don't know if you considered the diminution of property values that might occur. I don't know if you know the specific plans that are for there. I don't know if you considered establishing curfews, because motorcycles are loud, and motorcycles and large numbers are really loud. And we have kids who try to go to sleep at night. We have people who like to sit on porches and decks and patios and enjoy the evening. So there should be some consideration for limiting how late this can go on. I understand that overnight accommodations are contemplated. Have you seen the plan? Do you know what they look like? Are they consistent with the residential area? Are you going to allow firearms on the premises? Alcohol's contemplated. In my line of work, I learned alcohol and firearms don't mix. If you want to do something about speed limits, it's an congested area as it is. The police do everything they can with short staff, but the motorcycles come through there at more than 35. Maybe the speed limit should be lowered to 25. I just ask that you not put in my front door what you don't want in your own front door. Just, you have an obligation to look at the details, to consider the consequences, and to make a decision that's good for everybody. Little League fields are a great part of that, but don't forget the rest of them. That's all I ask. Thank you for your time.
Danny Rule?
Danny. You know, it's like you said, pretty much everything was done on the 11th hour. And as Joe Public, we didn't hear much about it, you know? And there's a lot of things seem like happened that way. You know, and I do think about the kids. I mean, that's been there forever. As low as that sits, how can you think about building a facility you can sleep in? That low, I mean, what are you even bringing up the road of? What does that do to the properties around them? On the other end of it, you know, the alcohol part, and I like to drink as well as anybody, but I fix a set of mailboxes down there that motorcycles take out. You know, if you mix alcohol with those motorcycles, then what are you going to have? And as far as acquiring that property, the property in behind it they don't own, coming out and they don't own, and that's why in the parking lot. If they acquired all those properties, I could send them on another little which property. But they don't have it. And that one property in behind it is residential, and the three houses on that back road, and I think you're selling this back that way.
He's upset at you.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, I'm all for economic development, but we need something that's going to bring jobs in for young people. Once they get out of school, not just for a certain faction. Thank you.
I can understand what you're saying, Mr. Altizer. I really do. And it just didn't hit me until you started talking about the residential area of the people that is there. My issue is, I got two family members lives right close to Back of the Dragon, and they've been complaining about the loud noise of the motorcycles coming in, and they can't sell their houses because of the loud noise. But all the thing I'm saying is, I'm for the Little League, and I'm for the citizens of the town, and I'll back them because they live here. And I guess I'm going to support the residential areas, too, and the Little League, whatever they want. I'll be behind them because they live here. And I got two families that can't take it.
Okay, I'm Don McCall. I live on 399 Evans Street. Been associated with this board for many years, and served as council member and a mayor. I'm sort of appalled. That facility's been down there for over 100 years. I play Little League down there, some of y'all have. It's more than a Little League field. It's a place where we're trying to come and associate and talk and make friends. You talk with the names, he said, "The Back of the Dragon." Back of the Dragon is not their facility. It's the road. It's named Back of the Dragon Road, and that's the reason people's coming. They're not coming here to see the dragon. I guarantee you that. 50 years from now, that dragon won't exist, okay? Because it will crumble. Chances are that the business down there won't be here 50 years from now. But the Little League field is still being here. You talk about building two fields? We need more than two fields, okay? Why are you spending $300,000 and trading two fields for two more fields? If you want a facility and bringing people in, you got to have something like five, six, seven fields. You know, that's what I go for. I wouldn't spend way over $300,000 for that facility. And it's going to cost you $2 million to $3 million to do the great work, the lighting, the air department. You know, it's your house. One other thing, while I'm, okay? I'm sort of going to express this, too. Tomorrow is not a week. Where were you at 18 years ago when the planes hit World Trade Center? Just saying.
Pentagon.
Okay, all right. So, just saying, 50 years from now, where are you? You might be dead, or your family's still around. What happens? You look up and say, "I think I give out of it for $300,000." That's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Dave, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for allowing me to come. I represent the Tassau Baseball Boosters, and I will try to be educational. Part of what former Mayor McCann said I want to tap on, you may or may not know this, the town has always owned that property. Years ago, in the 80s, the only thing that was there was a piece, most of the building was Indian, but a piece of a building that used to be used by the visiting football team to dress in. There was one corner that was still operable, and they used it still candy and soft bricks out of. There was one bathroom behind it, that were part of the town. The two dugouts over there, there was only one field. They were plywood structures used as bathrooms by the town drunks. When the wind blew, they blew open. So, myself and some others, and let me clarify this, please, I'm not paying Larry Blanket shit on the back here. This was a we improvement. But myself and some others came to the town and asked, "Can you do something? Can you improve this?" And we were told no. Went away with my feelings hurt a little bit, but I'm not smart enough to quit. So, a number of people, and I believe from revelation, I believe Don McCall is one of those, I believe Larry Poskas, Calvin Patton, Randall Whitaker, and some others. We sat down and talked, and we agreed that we could go to five banks and borrow $5,000 from each bank. We would have two co-signers on each note to the worst you could get for a side grant. We borrowed $25,000. We bought everything we could buy with that to get sorted. And then we went and started asking for contributions, and people came out of the woodwork. So, 90% of what's down here, the town has built some stuff down here, but 90% of what's down there, the Little League group built out of red markets. I want you to know that. Now, I think there's some confusion about travel law, or what is the season for Little League. I think some of you think that when the Little League season starts here and ends here. Used to be that way, but it's not that way now. After the season ended this year, my grandson plays on the team, so I know the details. They played 50 ballgames. Their record's 45 and 5. You've probably never heard of the Diamond Dogs, but the Diamond Dogs is what happens after Little League quits. And there's a need for that field, and there's a need for more fields all over town. Years ago, we got started with girls softball. At the time, girls softball, we started it down there. We built the second field, and we started girls softball. And I was one of the coaches, who was in that group, as were some of the others in Virginia, who were there, who were instrumental. We didn't have girls softball at the high school. We didn't have soccer for boys or girls at the high school. Now, at the time, Richlands and Graham both had soccer for boys and girls and girls softball at taxpayers' expense. But when we would go ask, we were always told, "We can't afford it." The way we got girls softball started, ladies and gentlemen, is we offered to pay for it. That's how girls softball got started at the high school. That's how soccer got started at the high school for boys and girls. We currently have been in a building mode pretty much ever since we started down there. We're building a second field behind the middle school right now. Tassau Baseball Boosters' current indebtedness is $250,000. We're stupid enough to think that the kids are worth that. Let me tell you why that we're so committed to this.
Hey, Larry, we got about one more minute.
Okay, I'm going to probably go over a little bit, so we got to give you a rest, and I guess I'll give you for that. But there's two things I want you to get out of here. On one team that we're trying to help, there are four kids and not a single parent in the household. Not a single parent in the household. What we're doing is bigger. So, I'm not opposed to, I'm developing, I'm all for it. All I'm asking you to do is make sure, make painful sure, that these kids are not in second place, or third place, or anyplace else in the first place. And I'll leave you with this. I was talking to somebody the other day, and I told him what we were doing. He said, "You guys have spent a fortune out there." And I said, "Our goal is to help one kid." And he said, "You're kidding me. Now all that money for one kid?" And I said, "What if it's your kid?" I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
That's my final, Alicia. I think, or...
Yes, but no.
Are you, you're fine?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay, so, so moving forward, Todd, with the specific...
If you're wishing to proceed, you just need another motion on the floor. I'll reintroduce the motion with regards to the Back of the Dragon real estate purchase agreement.
Second. This is all favorable. Of the agreement, that one rests, so we have a second, so I need a roll call vote?
Any discussion?
Or discussions? Do you have any discussion to start with?
Are we ready to vote? We're discussing right now. So, I mean, I would like to say that my ultimate goal in all of this is that the kids have better facilities. We're, I understand the history of the fields, where they are now, but there's limitations with those fields, and we do want to get them better. We have, we have a girls softball team that, what, got second?
Second, regional first.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they came within...
Four years.
Well, they came without that close to go into the nationals. So, yes, exactly. And they were surprised that they had the competition. I understand.
Yes.
So, I mean, my goal is, I want to have the kids have better facilities. And yes, we are talking about doing two fields right now, but that's not to say that we want just two fields. We want to have an area where we can put two fields now, and there's room to expand. So, I mean, this is what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to accomplish, I mean, the boys went to state, the girls went to state, regional, almost national. So, we want to have better facilities than we have right now. There's issues with that field. There's water issues, there's parking issues, there's... We want to eliminate those issues.
We don't want the Little League next door to the bar. Let's just face it.
And I agree.
And I am.
We didn't have a choice in that, sir, ma'am. We didn't have a choice in the bar when it entered. This didn't happen when the bar went in there, or when you put a demon out in front of the bar. This didn't happen. We had Little League people there.
Sir, whoever lurks, lurks, can't speak unless your name's on it.
But we have to realize that this real estate settlement that you took place several years ago, the town didn't sell it. It was a private settlement. So, we're back to the ground.
We have to deal with what we're, the cards we've been dealt.
Do we have a guarantee of property?
Yeah, that's what we have to...
In that real estate agreement, the conditions are that, let me, let me just reiterate.
Let me explain it.
Yeah, let me just reiterate what the conditions are in claiming, but not...
Can I, I've actually met with Little League, so if I could speak to this, because I met with Brenda, and I met with David Blanket, and I met with two other people, we've been mayor last week before we came here, to make sure that this is something that Tassau Little League wanted. And they all, we all left that meeting saying, "Yes, as long as," in David Blanket's words, "there's teeth in this contract that assures that our kids have a place to play that meets minimum Little League world, world Little League standards for next year at Lincolnshire." Yes, that's in it. And no more than one year in an interim facility, so that they know they have a home that's coming, that far exceeds what we have down here, for whatever historical bit it's been, and I'm not knocking what a great thing it's been all these years, but if you haven't walked through it, I did this last week, and there's a lot that needs to be done there, from lighting to walls, to dugouts, to, it's not exactly world-class. So, and with the conversation we had with the Board of Little League, or what I assumed was the Board of Little League in that conversation, was exactly that, that we don't want two fields. We want, we want a facility, okay? We want a facility that this whole community is proud of.
What, you mean the same conversation with people who live there and have to put out what's coming?
No. I'm very trashed.
We had the conversation with Little League about moving Little League, and that's what we did, and that's how far we've made it now, and that's what's in this. And sir, to speak to what you're looking for, I promise you, in the, in the document that you heard read, and you can get a copy of, it also suggests that before the sale is final, we have complete drawings, architectural, engineered drawings of what it's going to be.
I understand that, but what about the increased traffic, the normal, the other issues that I don't think were ever considered?
They are considered. I live right on the road where they come through as well. So, we have considered them, and we've considered them.
If you say so. But...
Call for a roll, please.
Call for a vote.
To go ahead.
Dave?
Hi.
Next is a special donation request from the TFS Bank Bushes. You got a letter, you got a letter in your back of the high school band, Lucian, they are requesting a nomination. I don't think it misses a dollar. I don't think it's even a dollar value, and I'm not sure if we have a record of what we've done to store it. We just need the, about 60 children. Okay, so, we have a formula that we typically go by, so...
11 to 50 is 50 to 300, and 51 to 150 is 50 to 400.
Say that again?
50 to 400. It's six, it says it's 60 children, and it's 51 to 150 is $50 up to 400.
How many, we donate $400 to the Band Boosters? Second. Any discussion? The Band Boosters were various disorder, and the band was supported when we asked them to help us with their celebration and train station, and any other time we come to the area. All in favor? All opposed? Motion's carried forward. And next is the approvals of rural development code of conduct for funding for a new police cruiser. Yeah, this is our same, last week we did a resolution, we left out this part, the code of conduct, if you want to have it read, if you'd like, just need approval from council to move forward with that, or maybe you can... Can I get a motion?
I'll bring that motion.
Get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion's carried forward. And next is the approvals of rural development code of conduct for funding for a new police cruiser. Yeah, this is our same, last week we did a resolution, we left out this part, the code of conduct, if you want to have it read, if you'd like, just need approval from council to move forward with that, or maybe you can... Can I get a motion?
I'll bring that motion.
Get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Now, the best, best part of the meeting, Lincolnshire Fish Species Update and Slot Change and Fish Hours approval. Mr. Ben, love hearing about the fish.
I'd like to do a quick update, we, just as a reminder, we had an electrofishing sample done mid-spring. Those results were presented, I believe, at the last council meeting. And since then, we had a follow-up meeting, or meeting with Jack Williams, biologist for the Department of Gaming and Fishery, trying to help us, how, just how we can help the vegetation at the lake. We have an overcrowded amount of bass, so along with that, and just, I guess, what we probably found out, that we mow it so close to the edge, and we try to keep it as mowed as possible, it actually hurts the vegetation. So, there's nothing really there for fish to hide and kind of get away from, and be predator fish. We're also working on plans for that as well, coming to where, Christmas trees, that we were working with Jack Williams to put vegetation there. Something that was talked about within though, is something that I've heard from people asking, just my own curiosity, is catfish. They said they can stock with catfish. Obviously, we need approval from council, and it would change regulations. For one, we normally close down the park, right around 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, the latest. We would have to keep it open until 12 a.m. Some people can night fish. It would also change some slots, and this is also just for, for the purpose of maintaining bass and letting some grow, and not being, taking some home. So, for the size restriction for bass, the slot would be 12 to 16 inches must be released. So, so basically, it just gives the, it gives them the chance to grow, get a little bigger, and it's, it's just to help talk, to talk to Jack Williams before we continue meeting, and even do samples every year. I believe the last thing they did was four or five years from, except for last year. So, implementing that regulation, adding catfish, and with all the vegetation changes we've tried to do, they're going to do a yearly sample, so we can see and kind of compare from what we did this year to next year, and see if it's helping, or what we can do to continue doing it. So, it would be, with basically, and the stocking is October 1st for catfish. Where we waited so long, or also we have been on the list, we are not in the actual distributor list, but he said that if, once I give them the go-ahead, they can pull catfish from other places and give us enough to have on October 1st of this year. So, and, and then after this year, we'd be on the list, so that every year we'd be stocking with catfish.
So, it won't hurt any of the...
Is there a cost? We haven't gotten that far, we're just, we're just working on regulations right now. I said we'll have to talk to council, and just kind of present that.
So, it won't hurt any of the other species of fish?
No, it actually quite helps. He said it quite helps, to have some more predator fishes out there. And like I said, this is just something, one, it just gives, it gives more options for fish out there. I know, sir, some have fish returns for catfish, and we spoke to them again about that. I think it's just real things like that, that just kind of keep adding on. So, I think when it starts starting to boom, I think things are happening, people are knowing, so we add a little to something simple, like just catfish, so people can fish catfish, trout, bass, it just kind of keeps putting to the value. And it's something I've heard a lot of people request as well.
Does catfish disrupt at all the trout and bass habitat?
From what they told me, based on the readings, it will not. They think it'll actually help it, because there's just, there's certain populations that'll actually eat off the, the bass that are overcrowded, and it'll take away the competition for the smaller fish. And again, with the vegetation that we add on there, allow certain fish to hide, and kind of let them grow a little bit more and live longer. That was the concern, was basically just, and we're still working with him, there's more stuff he said he would continue talking to me about for that. So, he said catfish would probably help more than anything, and just overall, it would help the breeding, so when we have, we saw good bass fishing, but it would help for all the other fish as well, so it'd be more diverse, instead of just a bass everywhere.
So, you're looking for a vote on extending the fishing hours and adding the new species of fish?
Yes, it was, slot changes will be for the, so for bass, it would be 12 to 16 inches must be released. Trout, it's still 7 inches, must be released. Catfish, less than 18 inches must be released, and then, and then just dogs with grass carpies and harvests. So, it'll be a new sign, so it's posted out there as well.
So, chief, no additional... Chief, no additional, that's not right. No, that wouldn't increase your, your gas workload?
No, it just would close the gate at a different time than we normally do.
Okay, just...
But keep in mind, stocking catfish ain't got nothing to do with 12 o'clock midnight. So, you can still be a catfish stock, 12 o'clock midnight, I'm not sure sure why you suggested that. Is that because you want to have tournaments up there, man?
Well, I talked about tournaments, but he also said that population likes to do night fishing for catfish.
Yeah, I thought you catfished at night, so 12 was kind of odd to me.
Because where we've closed it off before, he said that's too early for a lot of people that want to go catfishing.
So, you got people that fish. Who's the guy that you're referring to?
Jack Williams.
And what's his...
He's a biologist for the gaming department of the Catfishers. He, he normally works with us with this electroshocking and everything at the lake.
So, after a year, would, you should be able to tell if, why your fish is happening, is that...
Yeah, we, we discussed having it a yearly electroshocking, just to check it at the graph, the biograph that we had last council meeting. He wants to continue to check it to see what we do helps, what we continue to be doing will be helping it, and then just to, just keep the lake diverse.
So, here's fishing, and what do you think? Do you like catfish?
Well, you shock those fishes, how do you know how many's out there?
They do, it's, they basically go around the shorelines, it's not, it's a...
He's just encouraging them. They're literally dead. They stop.
He, he tries to explain it to you, he was about to do mathematical into it, but basically, it's just an average, and how many fish they pull up in a certain range in a certain amount of time, it's compared to, I don't know, some sets or comparisons of other things. And what they do is they use that as, so they catch a certain amount of bass, they compare it to Lake Witten, it was also in that, that last council meeting. But it'll compare how many, how many bass, or how many of these fish they took within 15 minutes in a certain area, and it kind of just gives them like an average, roundabout way. The word, I mean, they'll catch everything, but they actually, they don't get everything, yeah. They won't get everything, but it's more, more along the line with what we fish for, like bass and all that, but that's what they grab up.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, how many, how many pods would jump up?
They welcome me to come and do it.
Todd, I mean, what are your thoughts on that?
No, I just wanted to make it clear, you know, in order to, to control the channel cat population, as we need to recommend and let it fish, and, and so, but I don't want you to think that you have to move to the 12 just to get catfish.
Yeah, completely, it's just his suggestion, and the neighborly that you guys have, is what we're doing.
They just shut the gate 2 hours later.
I just seen places where they bring in catfish, and they multiply so fast that it destines the bass population.
Well, we have so much bass, that's what, that's kind of, they're trying to help that along, trying to narrow that down. So, that's why I was saying that catfish would actually help, especially if we have so much. If, when that, like, if they keep reevaluating for whatever reasons, if they're losing as much bass, they can put in a certain size of catfish. They order these catfish, I believe, from Maine, is where they get them from, and they order a certain length, whenever they do it. And if it's, if they're losing the population of bass, they'll regulate it, depending on the size.
So, the cat, the catfish, the catfish, the flathead is a predator, channel cat can also a predator fish too, so they're purposely putting it in here for the fame of the bar, then I got a lot of fish.
At what point does it speak, I have this question?
They'll check, they'll check, and then at some point, there's catfish.
Is there any additional cost associated with this?
Just what the fish will cost, just that, believe.
Yeah, he, they said they order them, and they said they will provide, they will talk a little more about how that all goes along. They just wanted to make sure that we were okay with certain regulations and proceed from there.
So, you can approve it based on costs?
Yeah, I thought that. Did you get a cost for it, or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see what the cost is.
Okay. Make a motion. Dave, make a motion.
Based on the cost?
Okay.
Or whether it comes...
We, we are, so we're making a motion to wait and get the cost, so we, so we know what it's going to be.
You don't need to vote.
Okay. Apparently, who's the one who's...
Okay, that's it.
So, we're going to vote on this. So, next up is Mr. Hot for the special burn ban request.
Yes, I'd like to respectfully ask council to consider outlaw, banning outlaw burning until we receive some much-needed burning. We actually had a brush fire Sunday, locals, we had some guys at the firehouse, they got a real quick jump on. Had they not got a quick jump on, it would have really turned out...
Make a motion.
So, we got, so again, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried forward. Right, so we made an ocean to, we have to look at this, they just made a motion for a burn ban until...
More rain.
Right. Starts raining.
Well, no, until the chief, until, until the fire department tells us otherwise.
Something that affects the state.
This is...
You're right. Not willing to be...
So, next is permission to investigate the veterans discount on utility bills?
Yeah, I've had a couple citizens mention this, I'm not in a position to recommend to council, but I would like to get a case of support, just to look into it when it comes to water, and, and utility.
Sure, just not on, I'll bring it back. Okay.
Absolutely.
So, next is the meal tax discussion.
Okay, for the last, and since 2012, and we had, we talked about this a little bit in the work session prior to cancel meeting, we've had events in town, and, and we've not, for strategic reasons, charged vendors any meal tax. And the reason for it was, back in 2012, I personally watched a lack of performance on Main Street, and wanted to increase the ability for vendors to come in and capitalize. We've talked to Richlands, Lebanon, Whistler, Addune, and Christiansburg, Blackspur, and Marion, they all charged. Bluefield was the only one we talked to that did not. So, I would like to ask councils, bless and to implement, start January the 1st, which will be any events on Main Street at the time of year, a meal tax for vendors on Main Street. Now, what this is also doing, they charge that obviously back to the customer, but it's also fair to the citizenry at the time. So, I think we accomplished a goal, I think we've accomplished a goal years ago, and, you know, our events have grown, we have more events, vendors are actually asking to be part of, so council's consideration of that request would be appreciated. Do you want to vote yet? Please, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Make a motion, carry it forward.
Next is the action of equipment. I started over here with Dr. Katran Gate, got some pictures you can look at. We've got a number of municipal vehicles that are retired, and we would like to take advantage of the upcoming option that Alan Neil is going to be having. I just need council's approval to proceed. I can tell you, those vehicles, if you don't want to see, will not move from where they're at, and they're lost in place. There's a few of them that you can drive up, in the new run, actually to make, to continue to maintain on the via way for tax dollars. Just need your approval to move forward. With getting rid of some of that surplus, but I make a motion to move forward.
Get a second? Second. Any discussion? I'm gonna miss the weed bus. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries forward. So, I didn't see any miscellaneous, unless someone wants to be bored or bothered.
Our public comment section has been completed.
I'll vote, I'm gonna second, so. I second.
May I say one thing? Before you go, sir? I went over my time, and I apologize. I don't want to leave you with the idea that you have the baseball boosters for a pose to yourself of Little League field. That's not the case. My plea to you is, please, make sure your diligence is there, except for the left. I agree with your comments. We need better facilities, without question. I understand that. I'm just wanting to make sure, my preference would be, our preference would be, that we'd have the new facilities in place before we get up these. If that's not doable, you've got a tough job to do here. I'm not here to criticize you. I'm here to plead for you on behalf of the children. Let's make sure that we've got the eyes on the ball. None of us, myself, none of us on the end of this whole issue, propose to, to deal. We just want to make sure that the kids are...
The reason why I said that, you know, is because of the residential areas, people living there. You know, I can understand, to be honest, when it's close to...
I agree with that. We have to get more Little Fields like you, and get the dial of all the way here.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We're gonna break for a second. Second.